All right, it is 5:30. We will get this regular city council meeting for the City of International Falls to order. First item on the agenda is to join me with pledging allegiance to the flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. Thank you, everybody. All right, please note that four of our members are present and Leon is on, so he'll be able to take part in any of the discussions. However, Leon without being here cannot vote according to state law. So just want to make sure that everyone's aware of that. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda with any additions or deletions. To the best of my knowledge, there's none before us, so unless someone has something else, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
So move.
We have a motion by Councillor Fuller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Kraus. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Now vote yes, motion carries. Four for the motion, zero against. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from March 7th, city council minutes. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those. We have a motion by Councillor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Fuller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Now vote yes, motion carries. Four zero. Next, we go to the minutes of our Committee of the Whole from March 14th last Monday. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion by Councillor Holden.
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Fuller. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Abstaining.
And I will vote yes, so motion carries. Three for the motion and one abstention. Next, we go to the resolution for the approving of transfers and claims from the, excuse me, going to the 401 permanent improvement, $66,666.66. That's going to be coming from equal amounts of the 601 water and the 603 sewer in the amount of $33,333.33. Next, we go to the Fund 403 Reserve for Capital Outlay. That's $25,760.42. That's coming from the 601 water in the amount of $19,136. Excuse me, and 17 cents. And the 603 sewer of $6,624.25 for a total transfers of $92,427.8. Accounts payable, City of International Falls claims, $413,638.10. Airport commission claims of $19,630.19. And International Falls Public Library Board claims of $7,337.77 for a total accounts payable or claims of $440,606.6. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the accounts payable and payments of claims.
So move.
We have a motion from Councillor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Now vote yes, motion carries. Four zero. Next, we go to audiences. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to bring something up that's not on the agenda? Please.
Hello, Council. Ed Bates. So I'm just, I've been working a lot and I haven't had a chance to come to any city council meetings unfortunately yet this year. But I did finally get a chance to read through the minutes from the February 22nd meeting. And it states, and I'm assuming that these are accurate as published in the paper, that Mayor Droba, you stated that no additional taxes or costs would be requested of the citizens of International Falls for the Cary Park project?
Correct.
I'm wondering whether or not it's possible to get that in some sort of a bylaw. Because to be honest with you and not to impugn your character, I don't believe you. I would 100% believe that costs will be incurred, costs are going to go up from where they are now for that project. And so I'm just wondering if we can get that into some sort of a city policy, a bylaw that prevents this council from increasing those costs to the citizens of International Falls like you clearly stated.
Okay. And those are questions and concerns that we can definitely have in committee meetings. I mean, we can refer that to the Committee of the Whole, we can have that discussion.
Okay. And the other thing is, I'm very fortunate in my line of work to get to deal with a lot of other area businesses. And it came up just kind of in a roundabout kind of discussion that a lot of the business owners in town don't live in town. And I'm just kind of curious as to whether or not there's a way to create a system, whether they come to City Hall or anything like that, where those individuals are afforded the opportunity to vote on matters concerning the city.
That's against, that's against state and federal law.
Is there, then, there's no way that we can make that happen?
For everything.
Okay, fair enough.
I just was curious.
No, that's not a city thing. That's much bigger than us.
Okay.
Fair enough. That's it. All right, thanks. Anybody else have anything to bring forward? All right, we'll also have an opportunity at the end of the meeting. We will go to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, Committee of the Whole recommendation to approve medical plan coverage for part-time employees as per the Affordable Care Act compliance guidelines. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So move.
We have a motion by Councillor Fuller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Holden. Any discussion? No, I always forget that. All right, call the question.
Aye.
Now vote yes, motion carries. Four zero. It's the only thing we have on the entire agenda that we don't have discussion on. I'm really sorry. I forget that every week. All right. Next, under new business, discuss the Chamber of Commerce dissolution. Tricia Hyble. Oh, I'm sorry, and President Lee Flarson, sorry. Morning, evening.
Hello, hello. So we're here for a couple of things. I think it just warrants our coming before the Council as our organization kind of fades out from the community to just address and, you know, publicly say, you know, we were grateful for the years of service to the businesses and the community. I believe it made it in the packet, the letter of lease termination, obviously the formality of us vacating the depot building that the city owns. So that is all in a line to be done and us be vacated by April 30th. There's no, I don't think, anything in particular to, of additional process or information to kind of share on that. As I noted in the letter, and I see a couple of members of their executive committee here, the Convention and Visitors Bureau in our last lease renewal was noted as a sublease of ours, but we're not. So if they have the intention to stay in the building, that that wouldn't involve us, they would approach the city and deal with that directly. And so we would just need to know, I think the only thing that would be an outstanding item would be on what I kind of deem like core utilities. I don't think you can shut the water and power and electrical off, off to a building. So whether we transition those back to the city or to a new tenant or however that's addressed by the end of April, that we will do that. The chamber otherwise is in our wrap-up dissolution process. So it's just really the like literal dismantling of all things chamber and starting the process of sorting and throwing and reallocating items that we can. We've been in discussion with some community groups about taking on Icebox Days and the Freezer Gizzard Blizzard Run. And so those have just been longstanding, big community events that we hope, you know, we have interested parties that we believe will be able to at least give a good effort of continuing those for the greater community because they've, that's really who they've served and what they've done for. But beyond that, there really isn't much of the function of a chamber that's transferable. So there's a lot that will just go away. I don't know if the council has any particular questions for us about any entity or faction of the chamber's continuance or not that you would like us to address.
So we actually just had a quick discussion because this is the first time the chamber has actually discussed with us that, that you guys were going through the dissolution process. So after we found out that the chamber was going to dissolve, we did have some conversations at our Committee of the Whole meeting last week. We do want to have a discussion with, with Visitors and Convention Bureau, make sure that they have a place to be and stay. But one of the conversations that we had is, we have not heard of anybody or any organization that was interested in taking over Icebox Days. And with the city having the trademark for Icebox, we want to, we would like to, you know, have the conversations with that organization or those organizations. So if you could get us in touch with those at a later time or maybe just talk to Betty about that outside the chamber, we would greatly appreciate that.
Oh, Mayor?
Yeah?
Can I talk for a little bit? I'd like to discuss the chamber if I could.
Sure.
Okay. I think most people know in town how I feel about losing the chamber. I don't want to lose a chamber. And I checked into a lot of different things and, you know, made sure I had my ducks in a row. But there's a lot of cities in Minnesota that are giving money to their chambers.
Correct.
And there's lots of them. And so anything said that, you know, maybe this is the only town that gave money to this chamber, it's not. It's all over the state of Minnesota. And so my feelings are, I watched, you know, through working for the city for a number of years, the chamber do a lot of good stuff. There were different directors that came through. I dealt with them in a lot of different things and they did a great job. So for me, it's a sore spot in losing it. I'd like to see it stay. It promotes the town. It's a real negative to me. So just wanted to let you know that.
Appreciate that. Any other discussion?
I think we have one other point is I would just like to address the statement from the city council that was issued in February regarding the dissolution of the chamber. Because unfortunately, Mike, in there that you all approved, it does say that you're the only city who does that as well. But the real thing was about the funding. And I felt like, you know, just with my name in particular kind of in this about how that went, I just wanted to clarify that process. So really, before you get into 2022, we have to go back to 2021. And I think like be realistic about how that negotiation process was handled between the city and the chamber and just how totally like off-cycle that was of what traditional city negotiations and things are like. So as happens in most years, the chamber and other appropriatable entities receive a notification from the city administrative offices about the start of the budget cycle of the chamber and the invitation to submit a proposal or, you know, whatever, to, to come before the council and meet in, starting in Budget and Finance Committee meetings, which we did in August of 2020. The chamber first came and presented what we needed for 2021. And now we are already March, April, May, June, like four months into the pandemic. So we meet with the Budget and Finance and don't have any really feedback back from the, the meeting. We understand that the city at that point was looking to be making some budget cuts in general to some of their appropriations. We didn't really hear anything about it until we were at the special city council meeting, then at the end of September where your preliminary budget was passed to go to the state of what your levy would be, where we first saw the indication that the chamber was being cut down to $12,000 from a previous amount of over $42,000. And we carried on, so that's two, like for six more meetings and over eight months with the city to really get nowhere. Like we, there was never any reason about why our budget was cut that was given to us. There was never, there was like this weird $14,000 of extra money at the end of the year that was kind of dangled. Like this went into 2021 when traditionally by the end of the calendar year, when your budget is approved, all of that is done. But we still went into meetings into March. We never really got that additional $14,000 that was out there or kind of flagged as to why. And at multiple communications and emails that I sent to the city and expressed in meetings during that budget process, I said, we will not survive this type of cut right now in a pandemic. While we have all of these other financial impacts by the inability to host events and fundraisers and do things to have another large chunk of our income sliced from our budget was going to be insurmountable by our small organization. And that was even in the discussion about the building when we were like, you know, about the rent and versus do we buy, was I said, I don't think, I don't know if we'll be here in one or two years to have a building to make it worth it, which is why we agreed on the, we came up with a revised rent, a lease agreement. And the city waived what our monthly rent was from that to assist as well. So, you know, that, that process went on so long and late that it was really only in near four months later that now we're already back to getting the same invitation from the city to come back again. And it just really felt like, for what? I think it had become clear in that process that there was no interest from the city to be funding the chamber. I think we'd had a number of discussions over the past couple of years about how that was trending and questions about specific items that the city was and wasn't interested in continuing to partner fund with on the chamber. And we, you know, while our contract is fluid and negotiable by both parties, we never had meetings or came to enough, we never really met to have really solid meetings about like where do we go as a greater entity to find a contract that serves both parties better. I mean, the chamber, a big part of a chamber's role in a community is in support of economic development. So in our mind, that door was always wide open of other projects, of other focus, of other things that we would have been able and or interested to be able to pursue with the city. So with that being said, I also want to go and say like, it is not because solely, wholly only of the cut, of the contract of the city that the chamber is not here today. There's a multitude of impacts on the organization. As nonprofits, we've seen just struggle in general, an erosion of membership and volunteers and other things that combined with financial impacts is what really got the chamber board of directors to the point of making the decision and evaluating the current status of the, you know, the chamber looking into a new fiscal year and saying where are we at and where do we go forward. So I think that that contract had its impact. And I think it pushed us a little bit further, as did COVID, from a direction that we were potentially already trending in. But it is not, you know, the chamber's not checking a box and saying it is through lack of support of the city that it's not here anymore. So I would also like to go on record and be clear about that. Like that is not the message that, that we have, I would say.
I agree.
So I don't know if there's comment or question on any of the specifics of that, but I just thought that was worth.
When I was in contact with the Minnesota chamber, they told me that a town this size and smaller have difficulty raising money through membership because a lot of the businesses, there isn't a lot of businesses in International Falls. And there isn't a lot of businesses in other towns. So it's real hard for them. I mean, they're, they're at a negative right away. And the importance of the chamber promoting the town, if the chamber isn't doing it, who's going to do it? And so after visiting with them, those towns that are, that's why so many in the rural areas, the cities are helping, helping with the finances for it. And I think we should be doing the same thing. I, you know, I, I look at how much it is. And then I look at all what it does, the chamber. And that's, I mean, that's a good trade-off, but if we were to give the money to keep you guys going.
Other councils had felt that way. And that was how the contract, I think, was started and grew into what it was. And then, you know, different directions can be taken.
Anything else? All right, we will push this to the administration and they will be in contact with the Visitors and Convention Bureau. And it'll go back to either land use and legislation or the Committee of the Whole. Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, next we go to land use and legislation recommendation. We consider an on-sale liquor license and a Sunday liquor license and restaurant liquor license for I Falls Group LLC, DBA Cobblestone Hotel and Suites with an effective date of May 1. Betty, can you just give us a quick rundown of why this is before us and how we got here today?
Yep. As the Cobblestone was beginning their growth and building in our community, they had approached us regarding liquor licenses. And we had told them that due to the other license in our community, we had availability because we can only have so many licenses per our population and per their charter. Can you hear me?
No, I could. I just didn't know if they could online.
And therefore, we brought this to land use and legislation back in September. And at that time, they didn't have all of the paperwork completed and, but they'd be processing it as it got closer to the time. Therefore, we waited until we had all of that and everything was in place before we would put it in front of you for final approval and then going forward to the state.
Okay. For some of you guys that don't know, we have one of the principal owners of, of Cobblestone Hotel here, Mr. Mike Demilia. Would you like to come up and speak?
Sure. So first of all, thank you, everyone, for this opportunity. And I want to thank the council for the support we've had so far. It's been really, really good. So as far as the liquor license goes, we, you know, as, as is discussed, we've been pulling our documents together and our, you know, insurance and our, whatever we need to do to get this thing moving forward. We intend to open, just to give a little bit of background. So the hotel will be turned over to, to the, to us for operation from the builder probably in the third week of May. So probably somewhere in the first or towards the end of the first week of June, we're going to be operational. So we need the, to be able to stock the restaurant, the bar and so on, you know, before that. So May 1st would be the latest we could, you know, we can wait to, to get the license so that we can go forward and, and get the items that we need to start the operation. So that's the timeline. Initially, we're looking at opening up maybe a little bit earlier, but it's been a pretty harsh winter, as we all know. And so, you know, we expect to be fully operational by the second week of June. But for all intents and purposes, June 1st is a date that we're using as, as an operational day, a date rather, will be bringing our people in probably at the end of May for training and so on and set up the hotel. So that's where we're at with that. So obviously, the liquor license is important and it will be seven days a week. And the operation of the, right now, we project the operation to be a four to 10, four to 11 type of hotel and bar operation. We may have some other, depending on how the concept of the restaurant takes off. And we do expect to have a fairly good menu. It'll be, you know, a little bit of a notch above if we can. Not competing with you hardly at all on your page. But it's, it's a different product, right? And so right now, we're interviewing actually chefs and we'd come in from out of town and help us get the, the restaurant moving. We figure it's going to be, it's going to differentiate us as a, as a hotel. That's pretty much all we have on the, on that. But I would like to comment on the dissolution of the, of the chamber. We were really disappointed to hear that. So I've met with Tricia a couple of times. We, you know, initially when we started looking at this and looking with Paul, you know, we, we believe in this, in the city. We brought a lot of money through the city. We was one of the investors. And obviously, we started the ball rolling and immediately someone else had seen my dance and said, look, just one hotel has grown up, we're going to have two, right? So all that to say, there's going to be quite a few rooms to fill. So, you know, we believe that International Falls could be a true destination for tourism. But there needs to be something driving it. We would like to participate in that to the extent that we can. So, you know, the solution of the, the chamber really caught us off guard a little bit. And it may actually hurt our chances of being successful. And again, now we have two hotels. So we have to find ways to, to promote the city. We want to work with, you know, whoever, hopefully the chamber can be reinstated. I don't know if that's possible. I don't really understand your processes in that respect. But from our perspective, it's, it's going to, it's going to hurt us, right? It's going to hurt the industry upside. So, and again, we're talking about, talking about these different events that go on, how the chamber would promote that. Those type of things have to continue. And we have other ideas in that respect. Well, when I met with Tricia, Tricia will tell you, I'm a bit, I'm a bit of a dreamer, right? I sat with her and I threw like half a dozen things at her. I'd say, oh, we can do this, we can do that. To tie into what we're trying to do. And I've been meeting with people in town here. I've been spending a lot of time, I've been coming here for the last 30 years on business. When I was with the railroad, I used to manage transport operation, operations. And I think you've had that story. We, we built up a lot of that infrastructure, I built a lot of that infrastructure. So I knew there was a lot of potential in this town. So in meeting with Tricia, you know, it became apparent that there's a lot of potential here. And meeting with other people coming into town, staying in different hotels now, those people have the same view, the same opinion. I had one gentleman from Minneapolis asking me if there was room to, to invest in a hotel. He was ready to say, you know, about half a million dollars they could put into this hotel right now. But we're, we're pretty much set for, you know, in terms of the shareholders. And it's a, it's a complicated shareholder agreement. We have investors both in the US and Canada. So that's probably going to be a home starter. But there was other opportunity. People are willing to invest. But the city has to, I think, in my opinion, demonstrate that there's a strong will to, to grow those ideas. So I just want to comment on that if I could. So thank you.
And for the, for the record, I didn't know Mike, what, a year and a half ago. But Mike and I have met and we've had multiple conversations. And I, I have the same exact concerns that you have. Mike talked to me this weekend and told me he was going to be able to be here. One of the things that may set you at ease, however, you know, losing the chamber is, is a concern. I think we're all knowledgeable on that is a concern for us, for the area. There's a 3% sales, or 3% cent tax that's on the hotels that goes to the Visitors and Convention Bureau. And they're the ones that really advertise the area from outside to try to bring people in. Now, it's going to be, it's going to be on, on other organizations to have events in our community that draw people to the area. And I would love to have you on board just in, in a conversation piece as we try to figure out how we can draw more events to the area from the Bass Tournament, 4th of July, the old timers hockey tournament we had this last weekend. We have events like Dancing with Darcy that brings people in from all over northern Minnesota to be able to see their grandkids and such, you know. So we do need to have more events. And I think that that's one of the things that we're very cognizant on, that we need to fill both your hotel, we need to fill the other hotel, and we need to make sure that there's more events. You and I have had conversations about You and I have had conversations about the Cary Park Project and how that could draw a lot of tourism into our area. We haven't been able to have a lot of sports tournaments in the area in the past. So those are all things that we have on our radar, and I want to make sure that you are in contact with the Visitors and Convention Bureau for sure, because I will tell you from what I've met about you, Mike, he is a dreamer, and he thinks big picture and long-term a lot like I do. So I really look forward. So we'll get you your liquor license and stuff, maybe not a restaurant license, you don't need to be doing that.
Right, 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 right. Yeah, if I may, just, you know, and like you're thinking, and as far as the cost of all this, I mean, there's always a concern with taxes, trust me, as a business person, you know, it's a concern. But I think if you, you know, if you build, they will come, right? And if you, if there's enough, you know, in the way of tourism that comes in, the tourism dollars can definitely offset those costs to a great extent. And in terms of events, there's a lot of, I mean, when I come here, when people come here, the focus is really on the outdoors, and there's so many events you can have geared towards that. You know, you could have ATV shows, boat shows, you know, snowmobile stuff, you can do stuff for Polaris, there's all kinds of things you can do here if you wanted to. And so, I mean, if ever you want to chat some more, you said I've got lots of ideas, I just need an outlet, you know, so.
All right, does anyone have any questions for Mike? All right, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve all of the requested licenses that we have, let me find that on my agenda really quick.
I'll make that a motion.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second, and that's for on-sale liquor license, Sunday liquor license and a restaurant license. Any discussion? Hear none, call the question.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion passes 4-0. Thank you.
Gentlemen.
Thank you, Mike. Next, we go to Public Works Recommendations. Proceed with Bolton Mink for Design, Construction, Engineering on the 2022 CIPP lining, manhole rehab and sanitary sewer line project, spot repair project for 12th Avenue and 2nd Street and Stenberg Edition. Chair would entertain a motion.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion?
Let me just make a comment, this is part of our bridging plan with the MPCA that we're starting with, so we're, that it's something that is, we promised that we would do to the MPCA, and so it's, it's a good start.
Public Works Director, do you have anything to add? We'll go with no. All right, we'll call the question.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion carries 4, for the motion, 0 against. Consider planning assistance for the Army Corps of Engineers to help develop a stormwater management plan for the City of International Falls in partnership with Cooching Soil and Water Conservation District. Public Works Director Ted Brokaw. That's so much better.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So Betty and I met with the MPCA and the Soil and Water Conservation District over the last year concerning the development of a stormwater management plan, and as part of that, to look for assistance in helping develop that plan, we have an opportunity to discuss with the Army Corps of Engineers about getting some assistance from them. But basically, for us to be able to have discussions on how that would look, we need to write a letter to the Army Corps of Engineers making that request. Now, the request is basically to talk about what are some of the things they can help us with. So there really isn't a financial commitment, it's basically, we got to send them a letter saying, hey, you know, we want to do this, can you help? And that would kind of start the ball rolling. But it's not to commit to spending any money on it yet, we're just starting out at the ground level, but it's something we are going to definitely have to do in the next few years.
All right. Chair would entertain a motion to get planning assistance from the Army Corps of Engineers.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Hear none, call the question.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion carries 4-0. Next, consider a transfer agreement with Woodseth for use of electronic media. City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Council. We have been working with Woodseth in regards to the projects that they still hold, that are the city projects. Some of them are partially completed, some of them they will continue to work with through completion. But at this time, we are asking for them to release these four projects as projects, excuse me, as outlined on this document. They are each at 95% complete, but we do need to move them very quickly as we're hoping to move these projects, especially the fourth one on that list, our green tech project, to move that forward this summer. So therefore, at this time, we are asking for this agreement for these four items, and as we work with Woodseth through the rest of the projects on the list, we will be coming back and, you know, moving each of them forward as time permits.
And there are a number of other projects that are on the list as well.
That is correct, at different points of completion, yes, that we will continue to work with them on.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything else you have, Director of Public Works, Brokaw?
No, you pretty much covered it, thank you.
All right, so I would accept a motion to consider the transfer agreement for those four items as outlined. So we have a motion by Councilor Bowler, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden, discussion?
I think one of the urgencies here on this one is especially the green tech one, so we can get that project going, make that move for them so they continue with their addition.
See, and I completely understand, and I think for economic development purposes, that is hands down the most important project that we have on there, but the alley behind Randi's, that is, oh, that's been going since I was on, started on council, so.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, they're all important, but I mean, there's a reason that we got to have that one.
100%. I just, I make light of that one only because every year it seems like we have some kind of an issue down there, and we got to get that on there next year, so let's really get it on there this year. All right, so we have a motion and a second, we'll call the question.
Aye.
All right, all vote yes, motion carries 4-0. Next, consider a resolution approving construction plans for county-state aid highway number 24, state project, there's numbers. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilor Bowler, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Kraus, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, would it be you of us to identify where Highway 24 is?
Sure.
Second Avenue from Memorial Drive to 19th Street.
Yep. All right, any other discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion carries 4-0. Next, we'll go to part two of that one, approve, a resolution approving construction plans for county-state aid highway number 7, state project, including the state, county-state aid highway number 24 and the state aid highway number 47. Chair would entertain a motion for that resolution.
I'll make that a motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus, discussion? Call the.
Identify those as well.
No, I think we're good.
Second from Memorial Drive, from 53 to Second Avenue East, 47 would be from 53, that'd be 15th Street and 53, Second Avenue East. And also, the, well, 24 we've already identified is Second Avenue East, so.
You rattled that off like you're a robot.
He's the Chair of Public Works.
All right, we'll call the question.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion carries 4-0. Committee of the Whole Recommendations, Betty, just want to give a quick rundown of where we're at with the ambulance taxing district and what we're going to be doing today.
Sure, thank you, Mayor Council. The ambulance taxing district committee has been meeting as the city representatives invited, Cooch County, St. Louis County, City of Rainier, along with the EMS RB officials to meetings over the past, about, almost a full year now, we've been meeting, trying to come up with an agreement to move forward with the taxing district with those four entities. What that would do is create equal amount of tax for all of the properties within the entire 989 square miles that our International Falls ambulance service services. Right now, there is no extra tax upon anybody for this, the city budgets for it. What we do not collect in revenue from the runs, we are right now in a shortfall, and it's, we're basically borrowing from the city funds for that. With the government payer programs, we are not, we're losing money going out the door. This is not, we're not unique to this, this is very common across the state. We've been, I've been in contact with the EMS RB, they're aware of this. That is why they have state statutes in place for us to create these taxing districts to help out. So therefore, we were in these meetings, they've kind of stalled out, we approached each of the entities, asking them for letters of support or not in support to move forward with the taxing district, so we, as a city, could bring that information forward to the county to put that in place. And at that time, the county approached us and asked if we could all meet again with them as a committee of the whole at Cooch County. So we did, each of the entities were represented there, and they agreed to meet in a smaller steering committee is what they asked for, and they asked each entity to appoint two members to this steering committee to drill down just a little further on details on what exactly that taxing district would look like and what the joint powers agreement would look like. There's different ways it can be set up, and that's what, you know, we couldn't come to that understanding in larger groups. So this is the, the steering committee would be drilling down on those finer details and coming up with a solution, hopefully, that would be best for all entities involved. And so at this time, they are asking for the city, asking St. Louis County, asking City of Rainier to appoint two members to that steering committee, and then we would begin discussions from there.
All right, so I did, I have spoke with the city administrator, and I spoke with Councilor Bowler, and those would be my appointments for that steering committee, so I would ask for confirmation from the council for those two individuals. Chair would entertain a motion.
Do you want a motion?
Yes.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Holden, do we have a second?
I'll second that one.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus, any discussion? I just, my only thought on this is, as we move forward, I want to make sure that everyone understands the reason that the city is looking to do a taxing district is we're six miles of, I think the number was 989 square miles. When there's losses on the ambulance, which has been every year, it's the residents of International Falls that are paying for everywhere else of that square mileage. The system was created in the early 80s, they just had a report a couple of weeks ago at the legislature, and International Falls was identified specifically on how it is unrealistic for communities this far from major hub medical centers to be able to continue with the amount of money that gets paid through Medicare or Medicaid. So that's why the city is trying to do this. This isn't because we want to change what we're doing, we want to make sure that everyone that's using the service is paying the same amount, not just the residents of International Falls, for a ridiculously large size area. So we have a motion and a second, I will call the question.
Aye.
Abstain.
You would, and all vote yes. The motion carries 3, for the motion, and 1 abstention.
You can vote for.
You should have voted no for yourself.
I'll vote yes for Betty.
All right, next is a really interesting, fun one. Operate up to $1,000 for the League of Minnesota Cities Charter Assistant Program to perform a review of the revised Home Rule Charter as requested by the Charter Commission. Chair would entertain a motion.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, please, I want to commend the Charter Committee for going through this. They've done a lot of work that should have been done a long time ago, and they went through the whole charter, and now we're going to send it to the League of Minnesota Cities to make sure that it's correct, and it's up to $1,000, it didn't say $1,000, so it's, I want to commend them for doing what they did. Great committee.
Thank you.
That actually answered my concern, so I, yeah, that's great to have somebody take a look at the changes to the charter and make sure that it's legal and makes sense.
So I just, I actually commended the Charter Commission when this came before the Committee of the Whole on Monday, but I really feel compelled, and I probably won't have to do it after this ever again, but I have done this a couple of times specifically about the Charter Commission. The charter is basically the city constitution, it's basically what the residents of International Falls have decided is important to them, and the rules and regulations for the city council. And it, the rules for the Charter Commission is they have to meet twice a year to update or affirm what is in the city charter. We refer to the city charter on this board a handful of times, there's obscure things that have been in there that we have to work on or work through, concerns. With that being said, when I first got on, first became the mayor, one of the first things that I had to do is, there were a lot of open boards and commissions that needed to be filled. And the Charter Commission had basically stayed the same for many, many years, however, as people were getting older or retiring or becoming snowbirds, they had kind of gotten off of it, but still kind of stayed on, so we didn't have quorums for the Charter Commission. So we contacted all the members that were on the Charter Commission, we asked them if they wanted to stay on the Charter Commission, and some said they did, some said that they were ready to let it go, especially when we said we had to go through the charter again. One of the things that one of the gentlemen had said to me is, I don't think I should stay on here, I've went through that charter for the last 15 years, if we haven't changed it in the last 15 years, why would we change it in the next 15 years? So with that being said, no disrespect to anybody, however, there was a lot of old white guys that were on the Charter Commission. So what we did is we tried to get, I tried, I opened it up to the community, we ended up getting a very, very diverse group of people on there. We had at one point, I think, 15 people, eight of them were women, ages from 24 to late 70s, and same thing with the men. We tried to get all areas and walks of life to be on that committee, and one of the first meetings that came up, they said, this is really hard to read. And they decided that they were going to change the format of the city charter, keeping the same spirit of the rules and regulations, however, they were going to try to update it so that the average layperson, not our city attorney, could read it. They went through the entire charter, they took the concerns of both residents and city staff on things that are outdated, and we went through, they went through the entire thing and they made recommendations. We have accepted some of the recommendations, but now this is the final piece. And the last thing is, they had to meet twice, twice a year, that's what historically for the last 50 years has happened with the Charter Commission. The Charter Commission is met every month for the last. The Charter Commission has met every month for the last two and a half years to update this, uh, this document for us to move forward. Huge kudos to the, to the, um, the organization, they, I don't think they ever missed having a quorum, I think that, uh, they had met every, every month, and they've got us to a new place. The city council hasn't, uh, hasn't, um, actually had any discussions about the, um, the recommended changes and stuff, because that's not really our deal, that's the, the residents that are on there, so, um, I think we've all had an opportunity to look at it, but as for full discussions or having any input to it, we, we haven't, so I, I greatly thank the residents and the, the people that were on that board to get us to where we're at today. With that being said, we have a motion and a second to have it, uh, looked at by the League of Minnesota Cities Charter Assistant Program. Call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries four for the motion, zero against. Consider a memorandum of agreement with Century College for clinical experience for students of emergency medical service programs enrolled in the college. Chair would entertain a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilor Holden, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Bowler. Uh, just for everyone's knowledge, this is kind of rare, usually the, the memorandum of understanding we have would be with Rainy River, however, we have a local person that is taking classes at Century College in Minneapolis or in White Bear Lake, I believe it is, and, uh, anyways, they're, they want to work on our ambulance for their clinicals, so that's why this one has come before us. So, uh, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries four for the motion and zero against. Last, under Committee of the Whole Recommendations, we have, um, reestablishment of the 2022 polling places for the city of International Falls. Uh, City Administrator, you want to just give some quick background on that one?
I can, Mayor Council, thank you. Um, after, excuse me, after the, um, state redistricting, the, uh, other entities, counties, cities need to look at their areas and determine whether or not they need to redistrict and realign their voting wards or precincts, whichever their, uh, area has. Kooching County, uh, had to be within a 10% plus or minus range, and our state statute that governs the cities says that we have to be, um, equal in population, as practical as, um, as we can be. There, it's not specifically defined, so I did reach out to others, and we are within 5% one way or the other, and in the Committee of the Whole, we, was consensus that that was, um, an okay percentage. Practical, and therefore, we would not have to change any of our ward boundary lines. We would not be recommending that at that point in time.
Okay, so I would, uh, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution just reestablishing our 2022 polling places as, uh, we have in the past.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus, do we have a second?
Second, Ben.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler, any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries four, zero. Any other business to come before the council? Hearing none, we'll go to the reports of boards, committees, department heads, uh, reports of the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Council, just an update, we are meeting this week with, um, uh, the police union and the fire paramedic union in negotiations, um, hopefully by the end of the week, we will have, um, those contracts ratified and, um, we'll be bringing those back to the council.
Thank you. So city attorney online, is that online?
I did not hear from him today.
Okay. Uh, department heads, chief, do you have anything? All right. All right, we'll go to, um, your packet, you got the fire rescue EMS monthly report, go to the, uh, reports of the mayor, council committees, boards and commissions, anybody have anything to bring forward?
I do for the rec commission.
Okay, please.
Okay, um, rec commission, at our last meeting, uh, we talked about retirement of Bill Mason coming up in 2023, early, like April, and so, uh, Chairman Tony Palm, uh, what he'd like to see is a committee put together between the city, school, and the rec commission to discuss, uh, the future of rec and, and what's going to happen after Bill retires, so, I mean, we could, you can put it aside and, and not get to it, and then all of a sudden be staring you in the face, so we need to, to get on it and, uh, plan for the future, so.
Okay, um, why don't we put that on the, um, Committee of the Whole agenda for, for April, and we'll have that discussion?
All right.
Okay, anything, anything else?
Please, just for the nation, there was supposed to have been a, uh, user group from Cary Park, a unit meeting that was supposed to be held last week.
Oh, you're stealing my thunder, I had that on my list, but keep going.
There was an illness, and so they rescheduled it out for the 30th and 31st, and we'll have the, the, meet with the user groups for the Cary Park development, and then find out what kind of commitments we can get and how, how that's going to pan out, so it's, it's going to be a two, two full days of meetings with people that Ted had set up, which they decided to set up twice, so.
Uh, and, and just, just to make it sound worse than it was, it was an emergency, it wasn't an illness, it was an emergency that caused.
To start with, and, so the, uh, the president of this group that we have used for this is flying in from Holton and not charging us anything for his flight in to meet with us, and, and Leon couldn't be there, so Ted asked me if I could sit in on those meetings, um, definitely the 30th and 31st.
And actually, one of the things that I think is really kind of, um, neat about that, uh, not neat, but, um, since the user groups got changed, there were more groups that wanted to be active and be part of it, so that's, uh, that's, that's benefited, um, by the time change, so. Well, you stole my thunder, that's all I have under the mayor's report, so.
Sorry.
It's okay, I appreciate you. All right, we will, uh, go to audiences, is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring anything forward?
Hello, my name is Joe Southern.
Joe, can you come up so we, they can hear you online?
Go do it. Just one minute of your time, um, I'm here representing Woodseth, and I just wanted to touch on three things really quickly, if I could. We've certainly been working with Ted and Betty a lot, and we appreciate them, and we're glad to work with them, just wanted to take a moment to thank the council for allowing Woodseth to work with the city for many, many years, we appreciate all the, the projects and the relationships, and we're, we're very pleased that we had the chance to work with the city for a long time, and, uh, and we're grateful for that, we wanted to thank you for that. Item two, we are still working with the city on some projects, and just wanted you to know that we're very committed to, to giving our very best and help all those projects move forward and move to completion, and we certainly will do that. And item three is just that, um, we're still here, and we're certainly, uh, glad or open to work with the city on any other projects or opportunities that come along in the future, but, uh, primarily really just wanted to take the time to thank you for giving us these years to, to work with you and, uh, work with the elected officials and with the staff, we, we are appreciative, thank you.
Well, thank you, Joe, appreciate it. Anybody else want to bring anything forward? All right, hearing none, we'll go to, uh, our correspondence, in your packet you have, uh, information from the International Falls Public Library from March, uh, 9th, the International Falls Rainier, Rainy Lake Visitors and Convention Bureau minutes from February 9th, International Falls Recreation, uh, Commission Board, uh, from March 10th, uh, the CN North American Railroad's newest release, March 16th, and the International Falls Kooching County Airport Commission Meeting of March 23rd. Reminder, our next meeting is going to be on April 4th, and I did forget one thing under, uh, a mayor's report, I heard that, uh, this weekend went fantastic for the, um, the men's hockey tournament, um, the Elks was full, uh, of people on Saturday night, I know there were people in the community, um, all over, and, uh, steady stream of, of cars going to and from Cary Park and Brocko Arena, it was a great event for the, for the community this weekend, I just want to say thank you to the board that, uh, puts that on, specifically Ryan Rudd, uh, has, has done a lot of work on that, and, um, I just want to say thank you, because it's those type of events that bring in people to our community, and, um, it's wonderful to have them as guests in International Falls. So without anything else before us, our next meeting is going to be on April 4th, this meeting's adjourned.